Marvin, who's in charge today? That boy. You get to decide when the presiding's not here. Just today or in general?
Today.
Hey, he put you in charge.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Since you shaved for us and everything.
Oh, yeah?
They don't really recognize you.
I know. He's young, doesn't he?
Yeah, that's it. I don't know, I was kinda scared of you there for a while. You looked like Grizzly Adams, man. Thought you'd bring a bear to work with you or something and...
Okay, so we call admission of order. What's on the first order of business?
Yeah, I don't know if we have any announcements. We can skip that. Counts payable review, did you look over the...
Yeah, I did look over them. I put those on your desk.
I'll thumb through them real quick. There's a...I'm making motion to pay accounts payable.
Second, the only thing that I had was that one. Yeah.
Yeah, we pulled that one out before, so...
Yeah, I was done last month, so... All those favor of accounts payable?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay, we'll pay the bills this month. All right, I can't get mine yet.
And the health department electronic medical records system discussion.
I handouts for you.
Right. Pictures?
Second page is picture. So as we discussed before, the new electronic medical record system that the health department purchased is less than what we expected. The last time we talked, we revisited the contract with NetSmart, it's a company, and said, "You must meet the deliverables, you must produce electronic medical records system," or electronic medical record that is acceptable by doctors, specifically Dr. Kaywood. So they took one step forward and then two steps back. It's just still not meeting the needs. Donna took it to Dr. Kaywood, who didn't think it was going to be acceptable, and he didn't go to a court of law, and it's not meeting HIPAA requirements. We did go live with the system because the only way to fully test everything was to go live. And Heather went to bill because we need to be able to bill for our services, and they didn't have the billing module set up. So we had a conference call with them to talk about it, and they're like, "Oh, well, you have to set up the service with MDR, who we have a service with now, but it's included in our NetSmart maintenance fees with the new company, with the all-tier maintenance fees with the new company NetSmart, it's going to be an additional $133 a month." So we kind of laid everything out, that graph at the front. If we stay with NetSmart, over the next six years, it will cost us $124,000 more than if we went back to all-tier. And on the second page, it really shows you the cumulative cost. NetSmart is an inherent product, and it costs a lot more. And we would like to discontinue the contract with them, give them 30 days' notice, cut our losses, and go back to all-tier.
Okay. How much have we paid them and how much do we still owe NetSmart?
I don't know how much we pay them. Once they put those credits that they owe us, we'll owe them about $16,000.
Is Jill here?
No, she's not going to be here today.
Is this...
I think we've paid them about $16,000.
Of...
We owe them about $16,000.
Okay.
So over six years, we'll still owe them that amount.
So are they in breach of contract for failure to perform or...
The contract was so big, you know, they say, "We'll give you these reports." It doesn't, the contract doesn't say, "Oh, by the way, you have to write them." It says, "We'll produce electronic medical record for you." It doesn't say that it has to be HIPAA compliant. You know, the contract is very big. Jill has been working with us, but I don't know if we are...
I thought the discussion that Jill had had with me in passing, I mean, it's not official, but I thought she said that we really, there was no breach that could be proved, proven. I think the deal is, it's going to be, it's just not going to work is the bottom line. And it's just a decision, it had to be a decision on our part to walk away from it with what we've invested in. I mean, they did invest it a lot of time too, but if it's not going to do the job, I think that was a discussion, it's just not worth sticking with. And if the overall term is going to be less expensive, then that would be, I mean, that was the other, the rest of it. But I don't think that Jill had come up with any breach from the contract.
So...so do we already have this all-tier software?
Yes, we have it. It needs to be upgraded, which they'll do for free. There's a few other charges, like to get it connected to the state's showmeback system so we can do, send the immunization records. You know, there's a few small pieces, but we have all-tier now. That's what they have been using for a number of years.
And is that...
Chris, I don't know if you rema, oh, I don't know if you were...
I don't think he was here when this all happened.
Yeah, the deal was all-tier. Originally was not going to upgrade anything.
Yep.
They were just stuck in old technology.
They were going to close the doors on it one day.
Or anything and make it work. So that's when we went out with the RFP to get something that would be newer and at least get us to new platforms and stuff. And the RFP resolved it in one responded, and that's insight. And in the meantime, after this is all rolled out, and all-tier has gotten moving forward again, so they're, you know, they'll support anything that we need to be doing.
Okay. This is all Windows-based all-tier stuff?
Yes, newer Windows, I mean, Windows 7, 8, whatever, I mean, the latest technology that the original all-tier did not do.
So what do you need from us today then to decide to...
Do you want to say okay?
Have you seen the new all-tier stuff?
Yep.
And it does, does everything that you want us, want it to do?
All-tier currently works for us really well. The only hiccup at that point was the lack of them not continuing, but they are now, and it works really well for our clinic. And the improvements they've made to their grade, all hands on our services.
And do other health departments use all-tier or...
I don't know. We don't know. One county uses it, is like, we did go to them and see demo before we implemented ourselves, but they had went from paper to DMR. So they were still kind of learning the system and didn't really know all of its features at that time. And that was already activated, probably.
What guarantees do we have from all-tier that their demo is going to be actually what we get? I mean, you understand my concern, yeah.
Yeah, but we, I guess we're counting on that what we have now is good. And if they will upgrade it to new computers, it's going to be good. And we know from the NetSmart, the insight, that it's not user-friendly. It's costing more staff hours trying to fix the system, you know...
We never had problems with it before.
Yeah.
The reason we were even looking at some difference because all-tier said, "We're done, we're going to quit doing this in a year," and too bad.
And just as an example, like the last week or the week before, the clinic was all backed up because when people came in for one immunization charge, it was adding all these other charges to the nurse's tab and go back into NetSmart and take the other charges off before people could get checked out. It's costing us a lot more time because it's just harder work and attempts to be intuitive.
Okay. So roughly, we're going to save $130,000 on over six years? Or I guess not save, but not spend.
I'm not saying a 10% increase per year because contractually on all-tier, they can go up 10%.
Position down.
And then this year, they went up 4%. And last year, it actually went up 10%.
Well, we've had good relationship with them before. They've always worked, just...
I think the other thing though is all-tier was actually purchased, I think, by a different group of people or something. CGM now is what owns it, so it's not, I mean, when we're saying all-tier, it's really not them that's...
Mom, you're good.
So are you, are you good with the all-tier software?
I'm fine. I mean, to me, well, I always say it's no-brainer. You always, if you have what's working, you'd like to keep on with it. And they just had a rough patch where the original all-tier was not, it was having problems if they weren't supporting it and stuff. And I think, you know, I don't know, but we think they got past that point now, and they're actually supporting their product again and being progressive. And they're, I mean, the whole office is familiar with it, so unless there's a major, major change in it, it's what they've been using for many years now. So it's got to be more productive for them to be using that existing system versus what they've got now, which is totally...
This system is just not consistent throughout the whole thing. And so learning a new system is not a bad thing, we could learn that. But when it's not consistent, and we are just spending so much staff time going over it, and then one time you do one thing and it works, and next time you do something and it's saying exactly, and it doesn't. So it's just, learning new systems is, like this all-tier, it serves a purpose for the medical record. You know, if we need to print out a medical record to give to someone, to take to a PCP, they could do it. This medical record in NetSmart, Dr. Kaywood said it would work for him, his purposes, it would be okay, he could get by with it. But if we were actually going to print it out to give to a client to take to a PCP, let's say they get it from a provider, not, it would really be useless for them, and you would not be able to really understand. He knows what we're doing, so he can tell and tell, but it would not really be a very helpful record for a client to give a PCP.
And all-tier will have ability to do electronical medical records and all that stuff?
They have all along. We've been able to print it out all along.
So I move to sever the contract with NetSmart and upgrade to all-tier.
Is that what we need to do?
Yeah, I have you, I just want one question. Have you talked to Jill since you've decided to submit? And she said that if we provided her list of reasons, she'd write the letter telling NetSmart they had 30 days' notice. The only thing I want to wait is until we get a revised statement from them that shows the $20,000 credit. And then we'll turn right around and send, and they, I'm supposed to be getting that from them, and we'll turn around and send them the letter giving them 30 days' notice. So I had, I talked to Jill last week when it was put on the agenda.
All right.
She's good with it. And she planned to be here, I'm sure she's just, oh crap, not because of the weather.
All right. I'll second it. And if we get any bills from them, make sure you pull them out. I'll try to watch for it too, but I'm...
Yeah, the last one we paid, we had to pay it because it was paying for the visits that they came here, it was their expenses when they had a staff person come here on site when we went go live. That's the only thing.
So Debbie showed that we had paid them $73,000 and we still owe them $16,000, so...and then you're showing a credit here.
Actually, I only took the $10,000 as a credit because we only paid the $10,000. But if you're saying 20...
Well, the 20, it was $20,000 total. And we paid them 10.
Is that this or...
The last statement I got from them still showed that 10,000 balance. So when they take the 10,000 credit off and the 10,000 balance off, we should still owe them just $16,000.
I think you're right.
We're not going to pay them the $16,000, is that correct?
The worst-case scenario, if they want to lawsuit, we have the worst-case scenario.
If they want to sue.
Yeah, okay.
If that's what you're...
So I would amend my motion to say that we will not pay NetSmart any further monies, and they can come after us for, for any damages there and after the credits have been issued, so...and we will still sever the, sever the contract and enter a contract with all-tier,
Then I'll second the amended one. Did you run out of room on your paper to write that on?
Do we have to vote on that or is this just a...
Yeah, we'll have to vote on it.
Okay.
But that's why I was wondering, if y'all just needed direction to move on with all-tier or if we just had to quit paying what's-her-names and...
Okay. And y'all have to get us an agreement with all-tier, and then we'll have to vote on that again, so...
They sent us a proposal yesterday, but had some extra stuff on there we don't need, so we'll have them revise it and send it back to you.
So we call roll.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark's absent.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We've seen some famous staff, very happy.
Okay. Well, it's good that we can save that kind of money over six years too, so maintenance agreements are kind of a pain, so...next on the agenda is the signing of the agreement with the Nun Company.
Here's the agreement that Chris had sent to over. Basically, Chris, I'll let you explain what the test is due in 49 years.
General approval. I don't have a general approval anymore. I've got a hearing's coming up, and I've got to have certified general approval.
Okay.
Do we have to put RFPs or RFQs out for that kind of stuff or is that just...
Professional services, you do not.
Okay.
It's under, it's under $4,000.
Yes.
It's just not to exceed 4,000, and then if it, the only thing that I looked at...
If they testify, if they have to testify in the hearing, there will be additional.
Okay.
Not stated in the contract.
Only thing that I read in here, "The work canceled upon mutual agreement prior to the completion of the report will be billed in accordance with professional time and expenses incurred." So I assume that if something happened prior to completing the report, that they would just bill it out as an hourly rate?
Yeah, if you...
Up to that $4,000.
If they're going to drop the bill, then we'll contact them and we'll just pay for what's been done.
Okay. I'm okay with this. Did you read through that, Jeff?
Yeah.
I move to accept the proposal from Nun Company.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say it. I heard we got to vote on that too.
That's contract or...
It's a contract.
Okay. Call roll.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Contract's approved. We got to sign this, Jeff. It's our two copies, Debbie. Okay, next on things, next thing on the agenda is a discussion of intrinsic core invoice. I believe this had to do with the error that occurred on the tax bill that was sent out.
There was discussion, we did get an invoice from Chris to pay the remaining part of the personal property side of this new software system. And I guess my question to you guys was, because we had expenses that happened because of this software, maybe the way I understand it, of over $8,000, I was just asking if you wanted that credit to be taken home with this payment on the personal property side. All but anybody. Chris, do you have any feelings towards that or...
Well, yeah, we've already reached agreement on that. We are going to, any further changes that we make after accepting the program is where the money will go. And so far, I think there have been an additional at least $5,000 spent on modifications that we made to the scanning program. I don't know, Ed, if you had any others at this time that you wanted to mention?
No.
Just the mapping so far. While we're making quite a few customizations... Right. We had agreed that, you know, we would have a personalized, customized system, and it would be up to at least what we had before. Now, I believe under the contract, anything over and above that would have to be covered by their regular hour, regular hourly rate. I believe that's what the contract recommends.
Hour and term costs on these modifications exceed $5,000, and we did not apply those rates, which those are just our direct costs.
Yep.
Making modifications.
So that was just direct cost, not their rate. So we got a break on that work.
So we got a functional system now?
Personal property, yes.
Okay.
Larry?
Your system?
Well, are you, I mean, are there any major issues or any minor issues for that matter that have not been handled to this point? I mean, they said we have to work together on this, and part of the agreement was that, you know, the two systems would mesh and, you know...
Well, the agreement was all on, as long as we have a bridge, and is that bridge working or...
It's not 100% yet, and it's not...
But we're getting there.
Not necessarily intrinsic core for...
We're not going backwards.
Stuff to do also. Optimally, for the system to be good for personal property, we both need to be on the same system. And that's, I'm not saying that needs to be intrinsic core or devnet or whoever, that we should be on the same system.
Yeah, but we want...
There aren't going to be issues with the bridge, in my opinion, and there's no way around that unless we get on the same system.
Well, there was problems with us being on the same system to start with. Neither one of you wanted devnet or, both wanted devnet, both wanted intrinsic core. And so the agreement was, as long as y'all can get a bridge done, let's do it. So if we're still getting it done, I mean, let's keep moving. What, I mean, what was the question today? What are we talking about, this...
Well, the question was, is who, who made the error that cost us $8,600 to resend out the...
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Wasn't necessarily an error. The assessor's offices in the state of Missouri, they use a vehicle guide that's put out, it's based on the native values, it's produced under contract to the Assessors Association. Cole County has been using this guide as well as all the other counties in Missouri. In their original data system, all of their, well, I should also mention, this guide has about 40,000 items listed, everything from boats to motorcycles to cars to trucks. Each item has an ID, a six-digit code that the assessor places on their file, and associated with that ID is a, is a vehicle description and a set of values depending on the age of the vehicle. During conversion, I noticed that their data from their original system, all of their vehicles did have a state ID associated with them, and the values corresponded to the table that the assessor's offices put out. However, the descriptions on the vehicles, in some cases, did not match what was on the guide. It was my understanding that we were going to make these vehicle descriptions consistent with the guide, and that is what I did. What happened then is when the bills went out, what was discovered is that in the old system, sometimes they would pick an item off the guide and yet put a totally different description. Their old system allowed them to override the description that was on the guide. And so this caused description differences on what they used to have compared to what the guide said. Now, I went through all these differences, and most of them were very minimal. They would be things like a difference between Ford Mustang and Ford Mustang two-door, things like this, very minimal. Most of the differences were very minor. There was some, however, that were pretty bad. And so my initial response was, let's, let me go through all of these and figure out which ones are, are bad and fix those. However, that was not my decision. The decision was made, made to...
That was my decision.
To make all of them back to what they were.
Yeah. And the problem is, whatever prints out from our system, if it doesn't exactly match what Department of Revenue has, you don't get your tags.
Well, this is true.
Generally speaking.
But the Department of Revenue would have accepted it whether it said Ford Mustang or Ford Mustang.
Well, that's true. For that, for that minor item, something like that, yes. But we still wanted it to be exactly...
As it was.
As it was and consistent.
And so I, I did have a record showing what all item descriptions were before and after this change, so I changed them all back to what they had, whether or not they matched the state guide. And that necessitated then providing a file to Larry so that he could update his bill file.
So I don't know that there was actually a mistake, it was just, you know, the way you...
How it was entered.
Yeah.
Now, we've since come up with a method to work with this into the future to gradually start correcting these things so that they will be consistent with the state guide.
So did the, so it was just the description that was wrong on the assessment form or it was the amount that was wrong?
The amounts were all correct.
Okay.
The amounts were correct, just the description was different.
Okay.
And, and it was because the description on the item did not match what was on the state guide.
Okay.
And what I'm hearing, because of the extra expense, that you guys did some extra features and that you're not charging for, for the scanning?
That's correct.
Is there any kind of agreement or written agreement to that?
We, no, I think it was just a verbal agreement at this point because of the, I guess, the link and threat we're going to customize this system. So we have exactly what we need, which will basically be different than most everybody else in the state because it is so specific. You know, we, we have kept, just second thing, but the State Tax Commission has stated to me that, that we have with our real estate and our computer programs, we have enhanced some of the best programs in the state, the top four in the entire state. And one of the things that we wanted to guarantee with this change is that we would maintain that high level of quality with the programs that we would be changing. We didn't need to change our programs, we were working fine. But, you know, to get to the Windows base, away from the AS400, and to work better with the collector, we went ahead and changed, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
And the virtual property is good to go and for too much longer with some tiers of national teeth, I think we'll start on real estate.
I've already started that.
Most of the tiers of national teeth will be with plant grazers.
So how much additional money are we going to be spending on, on customization above and beyond the original contract?
I've already done considerable customization and have not built any, and I don't anticipate a whole lot more.
Okay.
I've pretty much covered everything that they asked me to do. There's a few small items that I'm still working on. The process to eventually get their vehicle descriptions to match the state guide, I'm working on that, and I don't anticipate building anything for that.
I was just wondering, do you work by yourself or...
No, I work with, well, my background, I've been an independent contractor with Cole County for 20-something years. But I've worked with intrinsic core. So my function in the assessor's office now is as a contractor.
Sure. I guess my question is, is, it seems like you're working on this solely kind of by yourself, and so, I mean, barring something would happen to you, is there someone else that could, could maintain and write new software for this and do all that stuff?
I'm the main program developer on the personal property.
Sure.
You know, our real estate program, I'm not.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm definitely in on the design.
Okay.
But we have support of the programmers. I'm just doing the initial development.
Okay, great. You got any questions?
Can I ask one question? Subscription fee versus maintenance, is that, what's the difference? We only own it, I guess I don't understand, this being a subscription fee versus...
First of all, no one owns software, you don't own any of the software, you have the license. And there were two methods of paying for that license, either a large amount upfront or spread over a five or six-year period as a subscription fee. The subscription includes maintenance.
It doesn't include maintenance. And I guess, is that how many years in the contract?
I believe in your case, five years, five is what we get initially.
Okay.
And is this all Windows-based or is it...
Yes.
Okay.
And that was one of the, the major reasons for us changing, was to get into Windows-based.
Okay. And I assume after the end of five years, that as Windows updates and new versions of Windows come out, that you guys will continue to upgrade and, and go to those newer operating systems?
We upgrade continually.
Okay.
And, and provide all our clients with the upgrades, if not additional. As we add features, we underwrite this.
You got anything else, Jeff?
No.
What do you want?
Been tired of this whole damn thing. It's been like two or three years we've been wrestling with it. So, the less we talk about it, the better for me.
That's fine. You wanna-
What do we need to do?
Pay this eight thousand dollars?
Actually, the fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand?
If, I mean, if Chris agrees that it was really an unforeseen thing, I mean, I'm familiar with that stuff. I do a lot of remodeling, and you get into stuff like that. I mean, I don't like it.
I can tell you that, that Dave spent an awful lot of hours down here with us on a regular basis, and it just worked out.
Well, let's move on then.
Then, you know, once we discovered the error, it was corrected pretty darn well quick. And, you know, we didn't get billed for a whole bunch of extra stuff.
So Debbie, I see this as two different things. You've got, this is more of a bill for the annual subscription and something else, and then what about this eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars?
Those bills have already been paid.
Okay.
Paid to several vendors, um, Central Bank for resending, Brown Printing for resending.
So, those have already been approved?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good with paying the bill?
Yeah, I mean, we got to.
Okay.
Got a contractor for it, right?
So, this needs to be, this needs to be approved, so we can pay this?
Yes, please.
That's not part of-
I do not have it in there for this run. No, I was waiting until after today.
So, we just need to approve it and put it with these, and you can run it today?
I did put it with you on it today.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, bill's been paid, so. Yep, thank you, Chris. Thank-
If you have any further questions on this, take any calls.
Okay, thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it. Debbie, you got anything else? No.
If you guys, I'm not sure, I know this is an easy topic, but hazardous travel, if you guys ever want to enact that, you guys have the authority to do that.
Well-
And I mentioned to her that you had texted me this morning asking about it. So, she wanted to pull that up. I don't know if you were familiar with what authority we do have, or-
I, I figured it was up to us to, to make that decision, so.
It gives the employees that are non-essential the opportunity to stay home, but they do have to use their vacation, or, uh, vacation or comp time.
Why couldn't they do it anyway? We don't have to call an emergency. They can just call and say, hey, my kids are off school today. I don't have anybody else to take care of them, or I'm snowed in, I can't make it to work. What, we're gonna do, fire them?
Well, you do have some dedicated people who will come, and they probably shouldn't come.
Why shouldn't they?
They're non-essential.
If you can make it, why not?
But if the state is calling, calling it that, and the city wants you off the road-
I think everybody that doesn't like this weather ought to move to Wisconsin or somewhere like that for about one winter. So, they, and you that, or wear different panties, so they're not getting all in a bunch, 'cause-
But, you know, you gotta take care of your-
Why did MU call off school today?
Huh? The safety of the kids.
What?
The safety of your employees. Why do they call off school?
There's been ice that's been worse than what we're gonna get in snow, and it ain't gonna be here till later this afternoon. That's a bunch of Nancys.
Well, I did talk to Ben, uh, before I came in, and, and he did say that we were gonna, uh, probably be seeing some bad conditions late this afternoon, and, and, uh, anyway.
I'm gonna be playing in it.
So.
I might drive Columbia just for fun.
I, I would like, I would like to see us close county offices at noon and send all non-essential employees home.
Larry, you have to say.
If one year is essential, you must stay.
If one day, the recorder actually opened his front eyes.
Well, I bet you suppose it's new, 'cause I, I'll tell you right now, I am closing her, but I haven't, I haven't set the clock yet. My staff will go home early.
Well, and I, I think it's important for us as a whole to try to do things as a whole, and, I mean, you can do whatever you want, Marvin, and that's, that's your prerogative, uh, but, uh, just, just from talking to Larry Benz, the, the conditions could get worse the later as the day goes on, and, and so-
So, when you close today, are they taking annual leave for the afternoon then, or are they just getting a day off?
I haven't decided yet.
I'm just asking.
Good answer.
You can do whatever you want to. You're elected official at your office. You can do what you want to with it, uh, you know, whether I agree or disagree. I'm just-
Chris, if they continue the weather like it says, and the streets, when I came in this morning, were not the best, and my street, where the hill I gotta come up now, was maybe cleaned off once, but it was re-snowed over, so I don't see, the streets were not that good, and if it starts snowing in like eleven, like they say it's going to, and the four, then we're supposed to have about another six inches of snow.
We're at about six inch total at the most.
But the roads and stuff, the highways, if you look, MODOTS already got highways that are closed.
Well, I don't think it's fair for some people to have to take annual leave, and other people just get the day off, and I don't think people should just get a day off 'cause it's snowed. There's work to be done. It's a service, so I'm not inclined to close it up. We had worse weather when we had the ice.
Well, I, I agree.
So.
I agree. But like I told you earlier, you know, a lot of times you don't see this come during the day. A lot of times it'll come at night. I mean, it, if people want to take leave, I, I'd say let them go home early, um, and that's basically what that, that allows them to do, right?
The one does, the hazardous, if they close offices, and we tell them to go home, then the other, they would be able, allowed to use their sick time for every one hour they're off, or two hours they're off, then one hour sick. But-
Can you sick time? Not sick.
Or that, if you close the buildings.
Can you sick for that?
If you don't close the buildings, then it's vacation or comp time.
They could fake a cough. I don't know. I'm just not real, I don't know, sympathetic on, along this. It's-
I, I understand. I mean, I'm, I'm out in it, so I, I understand a little bit more, and, and when I see some of these conditions, when MODOTS got trucks and medians and different things, I mean, it's, uh, they just can't get to it that quick, and, and, uh, anyway, the conditions were, were bad the other day, and I knew a gentleman that died, and so, anyway, it's just, I think we, I think we err on the side of caution.
I heard last, that with the ice that we had the other day, we had three, we had, Cole County had three trucks in the ditch, so it's not gonna be any better today, and, you know.
What's that gonna matter if we close the offices, though?
Well, if they put it in the ditch, they can't clean the roads, so I'd say if we sent people home, at least they're getting home early enough with daylight, and right now, before it really gets bad, because if they wait till four-thirty when they get off, it's supposed to be, that's when it's supposed to be the worst time, Jeff. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't agree with you.
Sorry, too. We can disagree on it.
It's, uh, well, the other-
Chris, I even disagree on it, so.
The other thing is-
We have closed in the past when the weather has been bad. It's not, what you're doing is not setting, setting a precedence, because we had-
I'm not worried about setting a precedent on it. If I was really concerned that it was a safety issue, uh, we got people like Debbie from Russville, that's gonna be harder for her to get in and out of her road, 'cause they don't hit her road. The state doesn't hit their road until-
I got a staff member, too, that's gonna have trouble getting home.
I mean, and that's, if they know it's gonna be rough, then they should have just called in. They said, I'm not even gonna go out in this stuff. Why should I? Because I'll be trapped in town then. I'm gonna get out, and I'll be able to go today, then it's not even gonna slow me down. I'm gonna get just as much work done.
The, uh, you know, talking to Larry as well, you know, when you do get a rush of people trying to leave at, at four o'clock or whatever, that does create a lot of problems. They can't get the roads cleaned, and, um, you know, especially if there's accidents and, and different things, so it does, it does pose them problems to try to keep the roads clean when there's more people on the road, so, anyway, but.
If you get reconvene and not close today, now, and reconvene later and make a decision to.
Well, if you get Mark to agree to it, I don't, I mean, why can't they take vacation leave, or? I mean, I don't agree with them being able to take sick leave if you close the office. Why is it sick leave? Why are you able to take sick leave?
Well, sick leave is more of a privilege, not a right, um, that, you know, it's, it's not, it's not personally, you know, it is, but it isn't, it's a benefit, but you use it when you have to, so, I mean, I don't know, that's the policy we have, for every two hours that you're off.
Well, I'm just asking, why would you be able to use sick leave, or why would it matter? I mean, if you don't want to use vacation leave, obviously, if-
There's some people that don't have vacation leave. There's some people that use vacation as soon as they get it. So, when it comes to a situation like this, that they weren't expecting, there's people that don't have a vacation.
Fake a cough.
What are you gonna do if they tell you, they see that it's snowing hard, and they say, I don't think I feel well. I'm, I'm gonna take sick leave and go home.
Yeah, sick leave is not good for this bad weather. That's the whole point we're looking at.
Then, I mean, I'd be fine with if they don't have vacation leave, and they're worried about getting snowed in here, and they don't have vacation leave time to take, and they want to take sick leave. I don't care what they use, as far as that goes.
What's Larry say for, you know, he says this, this, whether or not is very accurate. What are they saying for?
Well, that's what I had talked to Larry about prior to coming in here. He, he was telling me exactly what they were saying.
Becomes modern persistent from noon to eight P.M., half inch per hour.
Yep, so. And, and that, and his concern was the blowing winds, too, so with, with, with the winds, you know, it's gonna seem heavier than it is, and it's gonna be, visibility's gonna be harder. Or poorer, I guess I should say, but, anyway, so.
I don't care if we change the policy, that if, I mean, even if we don't, you know, have a meeting and close up, that they can use sick leave if they don't have vacation leave for it. I'm, I mean, I'm fine for that. I don't want to endanger them just 'cause they don't have vacation leave to take. Some people have kids. I'm not attached to my kids, and I gotta stay home with them. So, some people have to stay home. I don't. So, there's some difference there, too. I mean, they're, they're having to use up their annual leave, and I don't necessarily see that as-
There, there is something, too, for people that do stay, the emergency ones, that if everybody, if you close, then we do owe them sick time, or we owe them some.
Owe them something for what?
For actually working.
That's why the other ones are having to take sick leave or annual leave. They're not sure as hell ain't doing it, 'cause then it's gonna cause that much more headache. I'd rather say you get two snow days a year, use them or lose them.
Can I take those in July?
If you make it snow in July, we'll talk about it.
You said snow days, you didn't say they had to snow.
You know, and I would be fine calling them personal days. I actually thought about that, that if we can't do raises or something to, you know, give an extra day off, or something that, you know, have some value, that's not actually costing money, so. I don't know. That's a whole different discussion, but then we, we do, we don't still have one, one personal day, do we? We have one floating, and you got Columbus Day back? Good Lord, a bunch of damn liberals getting all these days off. I wanna stir the pot. It's snowing. I wanna stir the pot.
Are you gonna wait and see what Debbie comes up with the policy?
If we're gonna have to give time and a half to people that stay here, then that are more sick leave, then I, I definitely am not against it. You can call Mark if y'all, I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna bother Mark in London, so.
We should. We shouldn't let him act that easy. We had to deal with Intrinsic Corp today. You asked if I had any more questions. I was gonna ask him if DevNet gave him his program for free, if he would do it. I was like, no. I don't know. Should've, anyway.
They, uh-
I was gonna say, if I wanted to say-
The only thing I was gonna say was their whole system is customized, and by anything, there was nothing existing, period. It was built from trash.
And I don't think there's a five-year limit on the subscription. I think it's never ending.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. I'm sure the original was five years, and then, you know, then they've got it built, and so there's gonna be another subscription fee every year after that. Which, I don't know, is there a subscription fee and a maintenance fee, probably?
No, it's all one. But the subscription fee, if you don't pay the fee, you don't have, you don't-
Have the maintenance.
Use the software.
Right.
You, you miss the access to software.
I have a question.
Yep.
If I wanna join the chamber under the county, is that something that I personally pay?
We pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We ought to have as many members as we want.
Well, I know Jim gets a membership every year, but he doesn't, he's not involved and doesn't do anything. Is that just 'cause he's the elected official, or?
Yeah, I just call the chamber and tell them to change your name.
Or just add you, um, as a member.
We shouldn't have to pay anything for us to be members of it, and, I mean, if you're wanting to go to the different things, like their, Thursday afternoon things, where they do once a month.
I have to say things.
You know, shouldn't have to. See what they say.
Okay.
So, if the county commission chooses to close for the apartments that remain open, we'll receive one hour of additional sick leave for every hour the county normal operation is suspended, up to eight hours. So, people that actually work is the ones that-
That don't make sense.
They deserve something for having to stay versus the other-
Now, they should deserve something if the other people got to go home for free, but the other people going home get to use sick leave.
If you close, if you-
I ain't closing it. I'm gonna tell, I won't ever close. I'll tell you right now, I won't ever close with this policy. And we may need to look at that policy. I'm not gonna pay somebody double time to be here to work when somebody else is taking off work and having to leave time.
You're not paying-
They're getting triple time. Yeah, you are. You're paying them for being there, and then you're also giving them an hour sick leave for every hour that they're there. So, they're getting paid double.
Sick is not paid unless you actually leave here with ten years or more, and at a percent, not a full ride.
It's a, it's a day off. It's a, I'm, I'm not doing it 'cause of this weather, this-
But I mean, if they use the sick time, it's paid at the regular hourly rate, right?
If they use it, yes.
Right. I mean, granted, a lot of people don't use it, but-
I don't know.
Well, you've probably had too much. Okay.
But I would be willing to entertain, if we want to look at this and say, if you are gonna leave because of inclement weather, and you don't have vacation leave, or maybe you don't want to use vacation leave for it, that you can use sick leave for that instance, I'd be fine with that. 'Cause that's what it looks like it's coming down to now, is if somebody wants to leave, they don't want to use their vacation leave, so they're gonna come in and, and work.
Well, that's, that's, to me, that's not fair. Somebody actually used up their vacation time, so you're gonna let them use sick time, but those that haven't used a vacation time, have to use their vacation?
No, I'm not saying they have to. They can choose. If they want to just use sick leave, then they can.
So, anybody can use a sick leave?
Yes, sir. I, that's what I meant. I'm sorry. I, I like to bank my sick leave, too, 'cause that's probably what's gonna, you know, be around long enough.
You say you use the sick leave. What, what if you have an employee that don't have any sick or vacation yet earned as a new employee? That, that employee gets punished?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we got, okay, if you have, what do you get when you get sick leave? Is it the first six months you gotta wait?
You're supposed to not take any for the first six months.
When do you actually start getting?
First month.
So, the first month you're here, you're gonna get eight hours. And say the first month they're here is in January, and then we, we're off two days, or they need to take off two days because of inclement weather. I guess basically they're gonna owe us eight hours, and at the end of February, they have zero hours of sick leave, and if they quit before then, then we just have to eat it.
No, no, no. Nobody can go on their end. I'll take it off their pay.
Just close at two-thirty. You're gonna have an inch, inch and a half of, let's see, an inch and hour, half an inch and hour? Uh, there are two inches, there'll be an inch and a half of snow, but it's not snowing now. So, the roads will be fairly clean. They'll hit a four, all before it starts snowing.
Well, I, I'd say that, I mean, Jill's not here- Well, I, I'd say that, I mean, Jill's not here, but I'd say if you wanted to, we wouldn't have to go by this inclement weather policy. If you wanted to allow them to take sick leave and leave early, that we could do that. And essential people that stayed, you know, just got paid their regular pay. But I mean, I'm sure some offices, are you gonna close your entire office, Marvin?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's, I mean, when I say essential personnel, I, I guess I'm thinking sheriff, EMS, um-
Here's what we're doing at the time, is those departments you're speaking in? Sheriff, Public Works, EMS, Juvenile and Health Department. And I'm not sure why the Health Department at that time.
And I don't know why Juvenile really needs to stay open either, other than-
They got the kids there.
Well, the people that have to watch the kids, but, I mean-
Christie says she had people standing there at the doors this morning when she got there. And she said she had a couple of people with personal, a couple of kids or something.
Well, I'm pretty sure you, that depending on how hard it's snowing and stuff, that I'm gonna let my people go when I think it's not safe for them to-
Are you gonna stay at your office, or are you gonna close your office completely, or what's your, what's your plan?
I normally stay as long as I can, so.
I just, I mean, it's not fair that one office gets to close and the other one's gotta stay. I want to be fair to everybody and that's what I'm tossing in here. But I'm not gonna call it, close the place up and then be paying people double time to work here.
Guard your office if we close at noon.
Uh, we deal with that, that all the time and you, I mean, you can do it and LV can do it whether we close it or not. And my business, I can close it up, too. I can tell Kyle, take your ass home, go be safe, or whatever. Or, you know, we can still work, right?
That's my concern, and I think that should be your concern also, is the safety of your employees.
I don't think there's an issue of safety right now. I don't think it's a big deal.
It's not right now.
I don't think it's gonna be a big deal at two o'clock either. I'll be out playing in it, I can assure you. I don't know.
Okay, no?
I'm not inclined to. Not with this policy the way it's written.
Uh, do you want to change, change it? I mean, we have the discretion to do it.
More discussion on that.
Okay.
I just, today I'm not going to-
You don't want to do, you don't want to do anything today?
No, we've had worse than this when we didn't close up.
Okay.
I think everybody's crying wolf and screaming about the sky's falling 'cause there's an apple to hit them in the head. And I may be wrong. If things get drastically bad, we can decide something at two o'clock.
You guys can reconvene. You have it over.
I, I'm not saying I won't at two o'clock say something if the roads are treacherous.
Okay, okay. All right.
You just need to get with the clerk and then let me know.
You live in Russellville. When you going home?
You won't be here, though, will you?
My daughter's sick and so I'm thinking I'm going home pretty soon.
Yeah, yeah, I thought your mom had teeth being pulled.
Well, I canceled her teeth pulling because I didn't want my eighty-year-old mother to fall apart.
What's this, what's this for?
The Health Department said that you wanted to look at that thermometer.
Oh, okay. All right, my phone's blowing up, so, anyway, I vote stand, or I move to stand and recess till four-thirty.
So moved. I'll second.
You got something?
I just want to say that's the, um, county clerk's fees for January, or two bell.
Okay, county clerk's fees. Okay, okay.
All righty.
Greg? Okay, hang on. Uh, motion to adjourn till four-thirty. All those in favor? Aye.
We're in recess.
Or recess?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Sorry.
What were we talking about at a session here?
Well, it's something that Chris and I have been emailing my court.